Usually. So I'll call the planning and zoning special meeting to order. The first item is roll call. It's like, everybody is here. We have one. Can, excuse me. You have a meeting here.
Would you want to listen to the presentation first? Tom, would you want to see?
Sure, we can. Yeah, yeah, sure. So, actually, do we have, just at that mic there? So, thanks, everybody, for coming tonight with us. Obviously, Deb Jones, myself, John Reiner, our first code in the town attorney. And on the Zoom line there, we have some folks from the Horsley Wood group, which is helping us with these regulation amendments. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about cannabis, data centers, and short-term rentals, three really fun, diverse topics. From the Horsley Wood group, we have Jeff Davis, Nate Kelly, and Kelly Kane. I think all of you have met Jeff and Nate before in some of the larger zoning rewrite process that we've worked on a couple of years back. We've been working with them for some time. Jeff and Nate have a presentation that they're going to go through, and we're just going to kind of break each one of these topics up into segments. So looking to spend about 30 minutes or so on each topic, get some feedback from the commission, obviously, a lot of dialogue, so we can start moving towards a direction of how, understand where the commission wants to go regulating these. We've also received a little bit of public communications, not only at commission meetings, but also emails on some of these topics. There's also been a lot of correspondence with the county council. So a lot of that is in all of our minds as we're looking to take this process forward. I also, actually, some of the other things in the packet we can talk about as we get to that particular topic. But I don't know, any commission members have any questions? Or kind of hand the reins over to Jeff and Nate?
Listen to the presentation.
I have just one question. So are they going to break their agenda down? Say we call it data centers first, and then we have, we have comment among the commission?
Yes, so our intention is to go topic by topic, starting with cannabis, then data centers, then short-term rentals. And our intention would be to have discussion for each of those. We won't go through the entire presentation before we have discussion. And in fact, for a lot of these, I think we'll, we'll have discussion interspersed throughout the presentation potentially, or at least to a, to a certain extent. But we will try to get through a brief presentation and then talk through policy questions with you. So with your permission, I know John stayed, we were going to spend about a half an hour per topic. I'm imagining that short-term rentals are going to be a more extensive conversation. I don't know why I feel that way. It just seems like that's probably the case. So I would like to touch on cannabis and data centers and get some high-level direction from you so that we can take a first stab at drafting regulations. But I hope that we can spend a good chunk of time, more than, more than the other two for, for short-term rental, with your permission. And we do want to respect your time and be out of here in 90 minutes. Question, are you on the town side controlling slides? Or do you want me to screen share?
Go ahead and screen share.
Okay. All right, one moment. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Oh, great. So let us dive right in and start with cannabis. So cannabis, of course, is something that this body has already started discussing. So we're not starting from scratch. Staff has provided us with the minutes from, I believe, a meeting you had last October. So we wanted to start by just very, very briefly reiterating the feedback that was received from, from this body on cannabis to date. And then we have a few additional policy questions we wanted to run through with you to provide further direction for us as we prepare to write a first draft. So one of the questions that you discussed was which cannabis establishments should be allowed in the town of Groton? And of course, the state has provided a list of possibilities. Dispensary facility retailer, hybrid retailer, cultivator, micro-cultivator, production manufacturer, food and beverage manufacturer. And at your meeting, all members were willing to consider all of these uses somewhere in Groton. So then you discussed what zones should each of these types of cannabis establishments be allowed? And staff had provided you with some recommendations, which by and large you agreed to. For cultivator, there was some concern about allowing this within the CR, the commercial regional zone. And even though staff had not recommended it, PCC wanted to reiterate definitely not something that would be appropriate in the RU zones. For micro-cultivator and production manufacturer, I think there was general agreements, not maybe entire agreement. And for food and beverage, decision to define this both large and small scale, a lot like you allow alcohol production today for your breweries and distilleries. Then there was a follow-up question, should cultivator or micro-cultivator be allowed in the RU? And you had said you'd only consider a micro-cultivator within the RU. Otherwise, you were not interested in any of these uses being allowed in the RU. But we can explore options for micro-cultivators, which the other day you may choose not to do, but we will, we will look at those options for you. Another question, should the allowed uses be permitted, conditional, and/or by special permit? So it seemed that the general consensus was you should require a special permit whenever these uses are adjacent to a residential zone. And you are interested in establishing conditions, perhaps including location on a larger road classification. So you couldn't have one of these uses on, on a smaller local road. No consumption onsite limitations on window signs. We'll talk about signs later on. I do have some recommendations on that. You also want some additional information for cultivation. How much energy does it take up? How much water? How much chemical use? And the tax benefit of each use? And of course, those things are outside the jurisdiction of what you can regulate, but certainly can help you understand the value of each of these uses to the community or potential concerns related to each of these uses. So we have a list of other policy questions we wanted to go over tonight. And again, like, we don't necessarily have to reach full consensus. We just wanted to get your general direction tonight. So pretty quick and dirty on this one, so we can come back to you with a draft. But some of the other policy decisions that, that are within your purview to make within zoning. Would you like to regulate the distance between any regulated cannabis use and another sex use? So there are communities that are saying, you know, one of these facilities can't be within 1,000 feet of another one or a mile of another one, or whatever, whatever that number may be. And I know that the state has put some temporary limits on the density of these uses through 2024, but thinking long-term, would you like to see these things spaced out? You know, another possibility, depending on where you're allowing these things, is that you would probably prefer, maybe you prefer to have them clustered together in a sort of district as opposed to having them spread out. But wanted to pose that question to you all, so we'll pause and get your thoughts.
I have one basic question. Since we did this and everything, I guess I did pass around an article that I read that was kind of an eye-opener for me out of the Wall Street Journal, about how the potency of this drug is much, much, much stronger than it was, say, what, 40 years ago, whatever it was. Back in the 60s, I guess, a lot longer than 40, isn't it? Or, and I guess my question is, I would imagine, I'm just really asking, with medical type of distribution, there would probably, you would get the dosage that would be appropriate to whatever your medical condition was. But when it gets, when it gets into the recreational, does that, is it really allowed to give, say, a dosage that's 40 times what it used to be in the 60s and 70s or so? I'm just not clear on that, Nate. I'd like to be, because that to me influences where I might want to have certainly the recreational distributor, if we decide to do that.
Of course, potency is not something that's within the PCC's jurisdiction to regulate. And I personally am only familiar with the new Connecticut laws as they relate to zoning. So I don't know how the state is handling potency for recreational use, or how, how, how that is regulated. But what would you, once you had more information on that topic, how would you see that influencing your decisions as a group?
For me, if you can, if you can distribute a recreational dispensary, very high potency cannabis, I might not even want to have that sort of thing in this town. Medical, absolutely. I understand it's very helpful to a lot of people. Medical, but I don't, the people I know, it certainly hasn't been a high dosage. I mean, a high potency thing.
Okay, so this would be something that would help you determine whether or not, whether, whether you would consider prohibiting the use?
Well, where you would want to put it if you were going to have it. I know we don't regulate with potency, thank goodness. What we're faced with is apparently potency has changed dramatically and with some really negative health effects for people and some addictive, I guess, consequences that wouldn't have been there to such a degree decades ago. So that's why I'm really concerned about that part of it. Because I do think it affects where you might want to put the facility.
About quantity, that, that, in their, that whatever is, how much can you walk out of? Or is that regulated?
I'm so sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
How about quantities? Might be very tough to do potency, because that could get really technical. But quantities is a reasonable thing. Are we talking about dispensing ounces at a time? Or are we talking about garbage bags at a time? What are people buying with these things? Is that something that you regulate?
Again, I'm going to keep looking to your attorney, but I don't believe you have the authority to regulate that through zoning.
I, yeah, I'd like to sort of like how many samples you can.
Well, I'm thinking, well, you know, if you go to, I can't walk out of 20 cases of beer out of the CBS. I mean, there's certain things that, I'm not going. Can you actually take one case? Pennsylvania, so I guess you can't. In Pennsylvania, by the way, you can't. So that's, that's three different licenses. But so here, there's no quantity limits of any kind, any.
So we can take a quick look at that after this meeting. But what I've seen other states do is they actually limit the amount of milligrams you can buy in a single day or in a single visit. So I think that gets into some of Sue's concern about somebody can't walk out with enough to kill a horse or something, but there's only a certain amount. You can walk out the door, whether, whatever type of product it's in. And I don't know if that's really within our bounds to regulate. I think the state will regulate, somebody can only walk out the door with X amount of milligrams of potency a day or something.
Right, and given what I've read about, you know, the, the state granted municipalities certain powers and responsibilities related to this. And I don't think there was anything in the, in the state legislation about granting the municipalities the right to regulate quantity sold or potency or any of those things. I think if that was to be managed, I think the state currently reserves the right to regulate that consistently across the entire state. So I think that's something that you'd probably have to advocate at the state level for. And Rich, please correct me if, if I'm wrong, but that's, that's my interpretation of the law.
And I think you're right, and the other dynamic that's going on, so they're doing. They may come in and regulate this, otherwise you want sure the activity to provide credit or liability.
Who's that liability on, sorry?
It would be on the manufacturer.
Retail outlet as well. Keep his pocket always.
But it makes sense to regulate it as we do liquor stores.
Well, really, we regulate the location.
Exactly.
That's what we're doing here.
With liquor stores, you just, it's considered a retail operation. There's no special anything in the zoning regulation.
You could have five on the same street.
Sure. You don't, yeah, that's right. You don't limit the number or, or set the distance between liquor stores.
Is there, we don't have any distance set between parks, schools, or libraries either, right? I think we're deficient in that too.
Yeah.
Different deficiencies.
So the state does allow you to regulate certain things. So I'll just, again, go over actually broad level the, these questions. So you can regulate the distance between any two of these uses. You can regulate, put a minimum distance between these uses and schools, libraries, parks, and so forth. You may allow a permitted campus use to move within a certain radius without having to apply for a new permit. Maybe you want to allow this, maybe you don't. And I will just move on to the next questions, just these two slides. Would you like to require a security plan be filed with Groton Police, which is something you can do? Do you want to require that all cultivation occur indoors? Most communities are requiring this. Should hours of operation be regulated differently than any other businesses? This is something you're allowed to do. It's not something I would recommend unless you are, you know, concerned about. Yeah, because none of these are going to be in residential districts. I don't know. I personally wouldn't, wouldn't touch that one. And then also, should signs be regulated differently than for other businesses? And the state does, by law, give you the right to handle signage differently. Having gone through this with all of you several years ago and updating your signing, signage ordinance, the Supreme Court has ruled that signage ordinances need to be content neutral. So something advertising cannabis business, by my interpretation, should not be treated any differently than any other business per Supreme Court ruling. So even though the state has given you the ability to do this, I would recommend against it and just have the signage be as is for any other business in the community. But those are the big picture items. I guess the, the major, you know, the broad direction we're hoping from you tonight is, would you like us to look into all of these things? Or are there certain of these things you're like, no, we absolutely don't want to do that. Don't bother.
And a, and I'll be also part of another business? Or does it have to be completely separate?
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of your question.
Does a cannabis store have to be only for cannabis? Or can it be part of another retail business?
My understanding is it can be part of another retail business, but if it's selling cannabis, it is regulated as one of these cannabis uses.
The big umbrella goes over both of those, I guess.
So I had four questions. First, what I love to see is similar towns or similar areas benchmark. And I'm just picking, you know, whether it's in Connecticut. I mean, as you come down through Springfield, Massachusetts, of course, there's, you know, 30 billboards. And it's obviously a high concentration of cannabis retail outlets. By the time you hit Windsor, Connecticut, it's like, thank God I got through it. But I'd love to see benchmarks of three to four towns, maybe of a similar size or structure that you believe that has really already answered these questions, have implemented them, and therefore have seen the problems and the successes on it. My second question is, when are the town citizens, when do they give the feedback, particularly on retail or restaurants or however else it's served? When do they get the feedback as far as this process is concerned? My third thing is, if we could have a summary of the state laws, just a very quick one, so we see what the umbrella really provides as far as the state is concerned. That'd be of great interest to me as we go through this process, even if it's a couple paragraphs. So I don't have to individually make interpretations. That's it for me.
I think most of those can be answered by town staff. I will say that the state of Connecticut has a four-page summary of the law as it relates to municipalities at the ct.gov website. I'd be happy to, to share that with you all.
We had some of this given to us.
We did last year.
Jeff, is there a limit to the square footage of one of these outlets? Could.
I.
I mean, you want to have a Walmart.
I think that's fine. Yeah, I'm pretty sure you can set limits on square footage. I can't swear to that. Rich, do you know? I'm fairly certain that that's fine, although I don't know that you can. Yeah, I mean, you can do that with other uses. So unless the law specifically prohibited you from doing that, I don't see why not.
Shouldn't be any different than any other.
Probably just be like any retail establishment. You just have to establish criteria like that and have them finding purpose for that.
Well, I would say that it's probably better for small business operators and rather than like a national chain that would come in and try to, you know.
Maybe now, target now.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. I'm just saying that maybe that's a, you know, a way to kind of tackle that.
It could be a Walmart superstore.
Yeah, well, that's it, you know, and then, then there's no opportunity for this. You know, we're trying to give opportunity to. I mean, take a look at the size of the liquor store that just went up to 12. Yeah. Signs, it could be lost, so enormous. There's no shortage of liquor stores up and down Route 12, including on this. No, but the little mom and pops are kind of like going away, you know.
Like, look at those Total wines. Have you ever been in one of those? They're massive, right? So can we just talk for a second, just among this? So what is the, the feedback, the citizens, as far as what we're discussing?
Well, eventually we'll end up with regulations, and they go through the regular process.
And they have nothing to tell us.
They have to be formally notified of the regulations, and then you have a public hearing before.
Yeah, also, I believe the council held a hearing sometime back. We can, you know, we could get some feedback from that forward to the commission. As with many topics that are before you or that have come up on our radar, the general public can email at any point in time, we include that information right in your packets. You can, after you get to a certain point, if you wanted to just have a public input session, you certainly could. And we will, at some point in time, with any regulation required by law to hold a hearing, get additional input on the draft that we have. But at some point, along with any of these regulations, if the commission wants to say, hey, let's stop now, or hey, public, email us your, your, your feedback or your thoughts on this. That's something that the commission can take at any point in time, not prohibited from. But, you know, at, at this point, I think we're looking for some general direction from the commission on, you know, I think questions on size of the building. I mean, that's, that's good to know. I think from hearing from Jeff Davis, you know, signage, we probably don't want to get into regulating signage differently because of US Supreme Court decisions on signage and content neutrality. But any feedback on distance between this type of a use and a school, a park, a library? Or is the commission looking to just kind of, is this just another retail establishment like a liquor store? We'd, we'd probably double the draft.
Yeah. How we get the, the answer to this might be good if Jeff prepared a list of the 20 questions. No, but I don't think, I mean, not to debate it tonight, because he could spend all night on this, some of these, and then have people think, take a home, think about it, and then get back together. Go over.
Yeah.
I think, given, given the time, that's probably a good idea, because we are approaching 6:30.
I, I started to write, pencil in answers to your questions, but like, I would also like to look at a map that shows where the parks are and where the churches are, so that I could then look at where the retail centers are, you know, because there's like some by the Flodchester School there that. We don't need to come up with what the distance is. All we need to do is to say, yes, we'd like to see some distance.
Exactly.
Personally, I think we're deficient by not having a distance with liquor stores.
Why don't we take the 20 questions, right? Have them sent to each of the commission members. I think we all invest the time in order to fill out that questionnaire and someone summarize or quantify, or you, you qualitiate a process that we come up with a single document on this. Because it's not that emotional as the other two issues. Just one more question, Jeff. The, I thought I heard you say about cultivation, that we could not regulate where or the chemicals they use. But I mean, we got a lot of water resource areas and.
Yeah, so I mean, if, if you, if you're, if this is something that's within the Water Resource Protection District, then obviously, just like any other use, it's restricted in the chemicals it can use. And it has, has to meet all your performance standards to protect water quality. But you wouldn't have additional standards for this unless there was, you know, something particular or peculiar to this use that you'd have to have a special condition for. So yes, it would, it would obviously apply to all your WRPD regulations. But it's not as though the PCC can go in and, or the zoning can regulate specifically what chemicals they can and cannot use outside that context.
These chemicals different than what we would normally encounter with other uses? Or is it just like agricultural stuff?
It's, to my knowledge, it's agricultural.
It's generally agricultural stuff. So the herbicides and the fertilizers and the, and the pesticides would, would be a concern, although it's a much more controlled environment, obviously, if it's indoors.
Well, can we find out what those are for Connecticut and what's allowed?
Is there any runoff?
Fertilizers in the WRPD.
Yeah, but still, that's waste water.
Is it all water?
Yeah, that's, you, you regulate that, you regulate that in the Water Resource Protection.
Right.
In regard to whether it's, one of the questions you had there, I'm just wondering if that's actually a thing. In the Northeast, is anybody, is it even possible to produce this, this stuff in the outside?
Yes.
Is this, well, not 12 months a year now.
Right.
It doesn't, which makes it not very feasible.
12 months is a kicker, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you can certainly do it outside.
But you consider a greenhouse outdoors?
No, I don't. I think that's indoors.
Okay.
Takes, takes care of water runoff that takes.
A lot of the micro-cultivators in Vermont, I see, have those.
Yeah, I would think these all these greenhouses with crazy lights inside, which is another factor, but.
Temperature.
All right, so with these seven questions, I hope staff can circulate these to you all, and if you can think about it, put it in writing uh over the next few weeks, uh give that to staff, uh who will give that to us. Uh and that will help us with our with our direction, and if you have additional thoughts for, hey, it would help us make this decision if we had X, Y, and Z, please also um send those ideas to staff.
When we get into uh cultivation, would it make sense to have a little more information on how that's done? What what are the impacts power-wise and water-wise?
We should know.
But I think we should know to know if there are any concerns that we would have on control. Or maybe we just say we don't want have to import it all.
See, for a lot of the questions that you're bringing up, my my take is that information is helpful if you choose to, if if you think you're going down a path where you're choosing to prohibit certain uses. Um if you are planning on allowing them, they're sort of out of your purview. Uh so if you think that you would be interested in prohibiting any of these uses, then you need that information to make that decision.
The area where they're located, so location, it might be useful to have that information. And then we can control.
I think one thing maybe to consider as you're debating and contemplating some of this is would you be doing or asking these same questions if someone was going to be growing tomatoes or cucumbers?
I got, they say hothouse.
Or a hothouse. If things are not organic, they're gonna probably, I would imagine, we do a little bit of research. They're gonna be using the same types of water, chemicals, fertilizers, soil types. So is this something that as we do this research, how how deep do we want to get into the weeds? And again, because it's indoors.
Because isn't some of this grown, you know, liquid?
Inside, I I don't know what is controlled by the state from a growing monitoring perspective.
No, but it's for our allowing the use, that's.
But I mean, all compared to whatever is going on inside the Monsanto facility right now. It's not Monsanto doing whatever they did mysteriously, it's somebody else doing whatever they're doing. Wouldn't we even ask the question, since they're these closed loop, they don't want to, they don't want the H C running off because they want to use every ounce of it. Some sort of closed loop sort of thing with their nutrients and whatnot. And what's going on inside, all they care is, well, who could regulate what comes out? What's going on until it comes out, I don't think we care.
No, we're only in the location.
Why?
I'm moving right along.
Yeah, I I just want to go back to one issue. And here's the issue, so we're here to regulate, we understand our mission within planning is on very well, it's not, the chair reminds us quite often. But my issue is, does the town citizens want retail establishments within our town? Which is not under essentially our purview. It's a basic thing, well, why are we discussing it if our town people don't want that portion of this business? And or are more sensitive regarding distance to schools and everything. Because our point, my point could be, okay, we don't regulate liquor stores, but um if someone put a cannabis next to a um school, I think there'd be a little pushback on that. So I would like the town to do something first, or very early in this process that talks about the retail end of this establishment, whether we believe in Groton, that is the correct thing to do. And then we do our job within PCC.
Okay, and on my end, because my favorite question here about potency. Um when I looked up the state guidelines and stuff, it talked about ounces per day the maximum, which would make sense. Unfortunately, it didn't say anything about how potent that was assumed to be, so I'm just interested in that, I can work with, let's staff.
Doesn't it seem imprecise, like in CBS, they have very specific FDA guidelines, it's hard. This this does not.
Yeah, you would think, but I just don't know.
Liquor.
That's right.
All right, well, with your permission, I would like to move on to data centers. Um again, this is an opening salvo, we are, uh this is, there'll be a lot more time to discuss, but wanted to get some general feedback tonight. So with your permission, let us continue to data centers.
I just wanted to to make the point that that council people have the ability to petition the town council for a referendum on that under this law. That that at this point has not happened, the council will be here and try to give input, and again, that has not happened. Okay, sorry, Jeff.
No, not at all.
So we'll get.
All right, so a little bit of background on data centers, I know you already uh have been considering this, obviously with the moratorium, actually, I meant to ask, the moratorium on data centers pass.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Um so, we know data centers from the outside look an awful lot like other commercial and industrial uses. Uh but they are different, and it's primarily uh what's going on inside that makes them different. They do have high electricity and water use, uh they do make relatively high noise production. Uh they do require enhanced safety and security needs, primarily around fencing. And they do have low employment density, so if you're concerned about um you know, using commercial or industrial spaces to increase jobs, there aren't many people working in these locations, but the flip side of that uh as a benefit is that generally means they produce less traffic than other other commercial industrial businesses. So the policy decisions for tonight, and I'll I'll read through all four and we can get your general thoughts. Should data centers be permitted, permitted use in the town is number one. If you say, yeah, sure, we're interested in at least exploring it, uh then what zoning districts uh in in which zoning districts should they be located? Uh or might you want to consider an overlay zone? And I will say, based on our knowledge of of your zoning, um HW would recommend that you restrict these to your industrial districts. Uh should you choose to allow them? Uh what size data center should trigger regulations? And that's my understanding that per your moratorium, um the definition of data center that you're using uh sets that at five thousand square feet. Uh I think that's uh very, very reasonable based on other research that we've done. And should data centers be permitted by rights with conditions or by special permit? And depending on how you answer that question, we have a few um ideas for types of conditions that other communities have put on data centers that we can go over. Uh so, question to the group, would you like to discuss these four questions first, or would you like to also see uh what some of those conditions might be and discuss all this together?
My first question be, what is the positive benefit to the town of Groton for a data center larger than five thousand square feet?
Money.
Yes.
Where's the money coming from?
Um it typically comes from, um I believe what Connecticut has passed and most of thirty-two other states that have passed the legislation is that um you don't have sales tax on your hardware servers or your storage or anything else you put in there. So what Connecticut has provided is a use fee that is negotiated with the data center operator. Um and that use fee can depend on, sometimes it's on what's more than anything else, how large that data center is, right? So that money comes from that use fee, or, and we're not limited by what we can ask, it's just a competitive issue. Um or by any other conditions, which I have several, um which I'll introduce as we go through the process, that potentially we could we could choose. So.
Yep, that is spot on. Uh so yeah, that's the benefit, before the state will provide a permit, they have to see a demonstration of that agreement between the town and the uh data center.
Do we have to define the size? Because you have these very large data centers and the ones that you might see the local industries use.
Uh so again, the definition that you're using, the definition that you're using for your uh moratorium is five thousand square feet or greater.
That just put a stop on, what is that, realistic? For every type of business?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, it's like you have light and heavy industry.
Sure.
It's not defined in our regulations very well. But should we have the same thing here for a data center? Which ones can be put in certain areas, like a these large hypers centers, you probably want those up in the farm land somewhere.
We probably don't want. I'm not right, we need a lot of land for those. I mean, typically, like if you look at Boynton, Virginia, their pad alone is forty acres, just for the pad. And then you have all the surrounding issues with that.
So you might have some that are smaller that you might want to let.
That's right. That's the issue, right.
Larger than.
And there's a development of what we call regional data center nodes, based on what we call data gravity. And some of these smaller ones are becoming much more attractive to people, so that you put it closer to your business. And and those are probably, you know, a hundred thousand square feet, not, not anywhere near five. Um they could be.
Yeah.
They could be, but most likely not. And then we'll talk later, which I introduced last night, the evolution of the architecture of data centers, which is, um do we allow for T-Packs or mobile data centers as part of this? Because when you look at the big hyperscale tier four, which are um basically, um how much redundancy you want, G-five, they all include these mobile data centers, which are these massive trailers that come in and plug in fiber to electricity, water, whatever the cooling is, right? Those are part of the issues I think we have to have. But if I can just introduce and follow up what you said, Mr. Chair, is so I believe this is a very complex issue. And I believe that we need to benchmark. And, you know, the the realty, the data center report that you guys sent was actually very good, but I also don't think it was complete in some ways. Where I think we need to look at what Ashburn, um Virginia did as far as Loudon and Fairfax County, we have two hundred and fifty data centers. They have a lot of good experience, and so they run one point six gigawatts, and I work down there all the time, it's massive, you can't believe what they did. But it's also provided a tremendous benefit to the town because they were in an advantageous spot, more than anything else. Is Groton even in that, you know, spot? It appears as if we are in some ways. But I don't believe, for the moment, we've seen what the value of what Groton provides, which to me, which will start with Horsey-Witten, but I'm also like to turn it to John, is that uh why aren't we the most sustainable, carbon neutral, you know, best green, no diesel generators? People are building them now, why isn't that Groton's role, potentially? Even how we zone it from the start, why aren't we positioning ourselves as the best sustainable, green, you know, data centers in the United States or in the world? Finland is putting in completely carbon neutral, they won't allow anything but carbon neutral, right? They won't allow diesel generators, there's other ways to go about it. So that's my belief is, that's our solution, is how we decide we want Groton to be as far as data centers, so. Seems to me that was the, from the public comments that we've had, that was a big one.
Yeah, sustainability.
Basically, they talked about how much power they want to put on, and so a lot of that was backup powers, we all agree, so the backup powers, we've got it in. But in terms of making it economically feasible, so therefore they wanted to do peak shaving. Not just peak shaving their own use, but peak shaving, taking themselves offline, which makes it a power plant bigger than most power plants.
You got it.
Yeah, so I would just say it's one of the things I like to see in this, is saying the power provision for it is almost a separate question. And we would regulate that.
Yeah, maybe we need regulations.
We want a power plant in these places, and if the answer is no, then how are you going to power it?
Yeah.
So for instance, Microsoft just announced yesterday in San Jose, California, for a massive new data center, it's a complete microgrid biofuel data center, it's not a diesel generator in there. Why aren't we positioning, well, maybe you won't get a lot of data centers, maybe we will. Maybe that's our position, is that we have the most green positioning of anyone in in the world. Why not?
Actually, looking at the power provision, you say, okay, fine, red data center, fine, how are you going to power it? And so, okay, we're going to build by two more wind turbines out there in the field. Yeah, good deal, fine, you know, okay, so we have to bank it somehow, we'll work that out, but show us how you're going to do it. Not on site, because we're not going to permit a power plant on that site.
That's right. For for purposes of tonight and moving forward, you have a clean slate. So if there's nothing prohibiting you from saying, all right, you know, the big question, do we want data centers? But some of that relies on these performance standards, which Jeff, I think, was going to get into in one of the next slides. And if you, they, yeah, we're fine with data centers, as long as, right here, are potential uh conditions, as long as they are carbon neutral, they're powered by biodiesel, they you know, install winter.
Nickel zinc, right.
Then then we need to adopt winter by regulations, but that's a separate. I agree with you on, if they're trying to do power generation, that should be a secondary, that should kick in a whole other um category, especially if they're creating power that's bigger than both power stations, then is primary, then what's the primary use? Is it a power station or is it a data center? So, I mean, that opens up a whole other uh conversation, so we're looking for direction from you. Um, I mean, I I think that was just a a good little discussion right there to give us some general feedback. That if people want to move forward with saying, hey, we're interested, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouths in data centers, if they're carbon neutral and meet some of these other standards. All right, if that's the case, you want us to address those performance standards, and then if Jeff went back to the last slide, in what zones, you know, I think definitely wind recommendation was industrial zones only, I think that's a great idea. Um the other thing that we probably want to look at and get some feedback at some point in time from other business entities in town, is trying to understand, all right, our big bit electric boat visor, what do they have right now for data centers? Is it more than five thousand square feet? Because we don't want to prohibit our existing businesses in town from what they already have that weren't causing a problem before, or if they want to go over a certain size, do we then want to make them meet certain new performance standards, so?
And and they do need businesses in town, I just wanted to qualify that.
But like, if, you know, E V has their purchasing division, which is in town, they may have a small data center in that building.
Sure.
Which is a linkage of, you know, servers. So, again, we just want to make sure there's not unintended consequences.
Yeah, we, we, well, I mentioned that we made the definition. We don't have five thousand in the definition now, we have the prohibition. And and, you know, so I still think we need a small and a large, you know, definition.
It might be a small, medium, and large.
Yeah, the type of thing, it seems like it's probably beyond our stomach.
Yeah, the power uses is not realistic.
Yeah, and speaking of power, I I know you were talking about the subbase and everything, but I I used to have diesels on subs and design many systems, and so I'm familiar with large cat vehicles, and that's, you know, one of the ones they use. And I, I think one of the things that people don't appreciate is like fuel consumption. I mean, these things, you know, a one point six megawatt can take a hundred gallons an hour. And we were talking about a fifty fifty megawatt, I think, was what was proposed.
That's the start.
And that's three, that's three thousand gallons of fuel an hour. And they usually power these things at least for days, you know, so you're talking about mass and fuel storage.
But they'll tell you that they only do it for point shape, I mean, for power shaving, and that's not how the side of it in hyperscale, that's not how it works.
What happens when you have a hurricane?
I'm sure they fire it up and it's, like everybody else, it's going to be, we're designing this thing for five days and no power. You know, and and I I personally don't see how you could do a totally green power, yet fifty megawatts in solar now would be.
But it's not all solar, so that's what you'll see. So one of the things when we get to the end, I'm going to recommend, there's something called Data Center Frontier. And what it does is it provides a huge amount of white papers on what we're talking about here and the design of sustainability. And what it does is it provides a huge amount of white papers on what we're talking about here and the design of sustainability. If the design of infrastructure shows you what the market is that you're competing against. There's thirty two states, you know, twenty five billion dollars a building last year. It's a big competitive market. So we can probably get someone to build if that's our only goal, or maybe we define it on our terms. You know, and that's what I think we need to go down the path. What's Groton's terms as far as this is concerned?
It didn't sound like we have a a golden place to put it. So if somebody really wants to put one here, and they probably do.
Yeah.
Then we get to, we get to.
Twist. A good one, right? We get what we want.
Yeah.
That's that's also sustainable with our Groton plan of conservation and sustainability. Got to match.
All right. This is very helpful, and I would love to see any of that information that you were just discussing. Uh, and I'm sorry, I think of all the PZC members we have not met, but I I the your faces are so small. What's your name, sir?
Oh, mine's Kevin Tifftal. So I run, I run the largest silicon companies in the world, our federal cloud. So I'm in hyperscale centers. I've been a thousand data centers. I work in data center alley in, um, Ashburn, Virginia, all the time. So got a lot of information on this.
Great. Any information that you can provide us?
It'd be great coin as well.
Oh, yeah. All right. Well, with your permission, uh, because this we've got about thirty seven minutes left, uh, are you comfortable transitioning to short term rentals?
Can we just see your second slide here? Sorry. And we'll forward this presentation to the commission also.
But but Kevin, if you have anything off the top of your head and you want to add to this list.
I have eleven things that I covered here. But okay, we'll decide on this group. It's not just my thought. I get that in citizens.
And well, I think a glaring, a glaring one is emissions.
Yeah, clearly.
Yeah. Because if they are using backup. Engines, diesel or otherwise, you know, there's emission standards and use the term tier, they have tier two, tier three.
You know, so our first, um, agreement that we signed with DOT states, Town and Groton, didn't come before the PZC yet. We also put crypto in there, right? And crypto mining, which is very different. Um, it's going to be very interesting for the town how we address that. Just to let you know, China has banned crypto mining.
Right.
But that's, that's an interesting lawyer.
Yeah.
Question.
Why are they using? Farmers for gas turbines and generating.
All right. You might not need to ban it so long as you don't get so like, okay, that's fine. So long as you don't.
That was my question.
Make sure they don't get a tax break on it though.
Right. And the point is.
Give the tax break because having a data center is good. Crypto mining, yeah, we like the money, but just assume not have it.
Right.
And and and.
And and New York State, the carbon law and Bitcoin mining was just passed, as you know. So they basically said, um, if you're utilizing carbon, you cannot do a separate bitcoining, good Bitcoin mining operation. But and so out in Montana or Wyoming, one of those, a lot of the Bitcoin mining have gone in there. But a lot of the big hyperscale, whether it's AWS or Microsoft Azure, they actually through their service level license agreement. They allow for Bitcoin mining. It's very expensive, but they allow for it. And you can't regulate it. It's it's what they're, what they do. And I can build secure enclaves and you don't know what I'm doing anyway. So we're not going to, it was part of that first agreement. When I saw that, I was kind of like. Didn't agree with it, but in the moment, what's before us is slightly different. But we'll have a lot of information on that. And I'm not a big believer in carbon fueled Bitcoin mining. It's the cheapest data centers that you can buy, you can build. So.
Well, Kevin, I'd really appreciate if I can share with staff and then with all of us, uh, the additional conditions and we will, we will explore all of those things.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's talk short term rentals the next half hour or so. Um, so as you know, uh, we have been reviewing your past, uh, PCC meetings. Uh, reviewing all the written testimony that have has come in on this topic. Uh, we also conducted ten interviews, uh, with folks in the community, uh, five short term rental owners, five people who are, uh, generally opposed to short term rentals, just to get, uh, some on the ground. Context for how people are are feeling about this issue. We want to start. With the elephant in the room, which is how the town treats short term rentals today. Uh, and really until we sort of get a handle on this, um. It's, it's difficult to understand the implications of certain policy decisions moving forward. So what, what is this, uh, uh, treatment of, uh, short term rentals today? So. Basically, there are two, uh, legal interpretations, uh, of how these are treated. Historically, the town has not regulated short term rentals and has told anyone, uh, who inquired that they're not regulated. Uh, so a number of, uh, short term rental operators in the town have, you know, explicitly been told by the town that. Yeah, this is, this is something you can do. Uh, and so that is, that is a valid interpretation. Uh, legal interpretation B, which a number of people in the community have been feeling very strongly about and stating is that, uh, because short term rentals are not explicitly defined, uh, in your zoning regulations, they are prohibited. And again, where the town lands on this legal interpretation has pretty significant implications for. What happens, uh, with with your policy decisions? And so we're glad we have Rick here tonight to, uh, help guide us through this, um. Conundrum. Uh, it's not a fun one. I don't envy. The town for for being in this position, uh, it it's going to make it more difficult to come up with. Uh, some reasonable solutions, but here we are. This is where we are. Um, so before we. Actually, I will. We'll do a one more slide. And then, uh, want to pause for a discussion on that topic. So really, your decisions as a group are are pretty basic and fall under four sort of categories. Uh, one. You can choose to define and prohibit short term rentals in the zoning regulations. Um. According to legal interpretation, A, how the the town has been managing, uh, short term rentals to date. Um, if you did that, then any short term rentals that exist today would then then become legally non-conforming. Um, and could continue, but new short term rentals would not be allowed. Of course, with legal interpretation B. That would suggest that we are just simply clarifying and putting in writing, uh, the existing status of short term rentals as prohibited. Uh, which means that anyone operating as a short term rental today would need to stop. Uh, your second major choice is that you can define and allow short term rentals with conditions in the zoning regulations. Uh, and you could vary those conditions zoning district by zoning district. Uh, however, is hopefully you saw in the memo that we prepared, um. Given the universe of things that people are concerned about regarding short term rentals, there's only a small number of those that can be effectively regulated by zoning. So that leads us to option three for the town. You can define and allow short term rentals with conditions in the zoning regulations. And or encourage the town council. To develop a short term rental ordinance in the code of ordinances to regulate those things that zoning cannot. Uh, and beyond this, a number of issues that we've heard from the community, uh, noise, large parties and so forth. Uh, again, a lot of communities deal with those issues, uh, through their code of ordinances. Um. Having a noise ordinance for the town, having, uh, ordinance for for parties, regardless of whether a short term rental is involved. Uh, and then you basically give the police the authority to enforce that as opposed to your zoning official. Uh, and fourth. Um, and actually, I should have updated number four. You can continue treating SDRs the way you do to today. Uh, and if that's under legal interpretation, A, um. You would consider it an unregulated allowed use, uh, but you could have informal controls such as a short term rental owner code of conduct. Uh, or, uh, you do nothing. And, uh, with the legal, uh, interpretation B. And assume that these were always prohibited. Why define them? Um, we don't need to, we'll just. Enforce what's already, uh, prohibited. So with that. Going to pause, and I don't know if town staff or Rich, you have anything to add? Uh, before we just ask the planning and zoning commission, you know, where, where, what do you, what do you feel about these options? What, what are your? You've given everything that you've heard from the community so far. Where, where are you, where are you landing on on these issues at the moment?
Um. And let me jump in. I've spoken with Peter and I guess the prophets of the town. Kind of dealing with SDRs is, um, go go back before Peter. They say we don't regulate them. Um, so I spoke to him at some length about it. Um. The problem with trying to decide whether or not an SDR is legal or not under your zoning regulations today is what do you mean by an SDR? Well, you need, a lawyer needs a definition of it. And among the definitions that I've seen, I I I, and I know Peter's doing it. He's measuring it against your definition of dwelling. The definition of the dwelling unit is any regulation stating the newer group of rooms that include bathrooms, facilities for living, sleeping, cooking and eating. And intended or used by one household, and household is a family, or a group, non-registered person. Then it goes on to say whether owner occupied, rented or leased. There's no temporal displacement in this definition. Doesn't say rented for one week, two weeks, one day, three days. If it's rented for leased and meets this criteria physically, it's a dwelling. So question for for you is how are you going to define an SDR that's outside this definition? They, I believe, the the zoning officials, you know, is that. They fall under the definition of dwelling, so they can't be prohibited. So they, so in fact, an SDR under any of the the practical definitions, essentially. Can't be found to be something that is not allowed by some regulations.
So that's a definition also satisfied hotel.
Uh.
Oh, it's all. Can I ask a question? Because. A dwelling is any building or portion thereof designed exclusively for residential purposes and containing one or more dwelling units.
A dwelling unit is is the base.
But a dwelling contains a dwelling unit.
But it's not a residential use. It was residential. It's not used as a residence. That's.
The question doesn't, is, doesn't need definition dwelling.
The dwelling unit is a dwelling.
Is it?
And and what do you, how do you distinguish?
Figure on.
How are you distinguishing between residential units?
Well, what is the definition of a residence, a dictionary?
Well, you you don't define it as a dwelling unit.
Well, there's a lot of definitions that aren't defined in our regulations and, uh. You know, that it also says in our regulations that if it isn't defined in here, then we go to a common source. Which would be, I don't know what, dictionary. Um, you know, I I I submitted IRS. Definition of what what that is. They have a definition for a dwelling unit.
How do you distinguish between the FBR and residential?
One is, one is a resident, living in a residential zone.
The region of the league. Situation.
It could be though. No, one is, one has a resident living in it that lives in the town, votes in the town, is, uh. Uh, you know. Gets their mail there. The other one is someone who is a transient and they don't live in the town and they are, uh. Guests and guests and transient are, uh, antonyms to resident. They're not the same thing at all. They're opposites.
What's the definition of the FBR?
Is a a short term rental. I don't know what it is. It is evolved from what, you know, when that first person walked into the zoning office fifteen years ago and suggested this thing to them, and they said, we don't regulate that. Well, they don't regulate cats and dogs either. But if someone then opened up a kennel or this cat and dog operation turned into a kennel in a residential district, not allowed.
Well, what I'm explaining is visiting your.
Oh, great question. But but there are many towns in the United States. There's many towns around. There's benchmarks everywhere where people have made a different decision. So for the moment, you're saying this is how your zoning official regulates it. We're saying is this, this whole group is, we're looking at benchmarks that other people have done. We're looking for the town attorney to do that as well, so that we can provide some guidance to zoning officials, to planning and zoning for all of us here within the town as far as what that should be.
Well, the other community is generally, they stay away from zoning. Federal ordinance power. And, you know, at least a year ago, John and I backed. Everybody was on that one. As, uh, as a dwelling unit that was opening or right in there.
Well, because what we were talking about before was that I think we need both because I don't think we want to get rid of them altogether. I think we're in agreement with that, having some of them in around Mystic and wherever else is is okay. Or they're already here and we've been living with them and we want to maintain that. So we do need the two things, but we want to tell people where they can be. So it's one of the things we're just missing is the definition. We're we're missing a definition of what that is. Okay, so if we put the definition in there, that that's part of the cure then. True.
I don't think it would necessarily agree with your conclusion.
Yeah, and and the idea that that it's a legal non-conforming use, I have a real. I mean, legal non-conforming, it had to have been legal. Before it was non-conforming and and businesses, which they are. Uh, I could show multiple, you know, ways that these things would be considered businesses. Uh, aren't allowed. And I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not like trying to like. But how do we have businesses operating in a residential? Area and say that they were ever legal? They weren't.
Wouldn't possibly. I think it's two different questions, though. I think it's two different things. Because if we want them, we want some of them to be legal and controlled. We don't want to suddenly not have any anywhere.
Well, maybe we need to define it and then go back and allow it.
Possibly, huh? Right? We're going, if you want, if you're, if you're owner, um, occupied, if you're living on the same rep, that could be part of the definition.
Part of the definition. I'd say, but so as long as while we're trying to say, okay, you can't have any, and we're defining why you can't have any. Except now we're come come with those exceptions are, which can be both owner occupied and location wise too. There's some places where I was talking, Michael, before about using that. What wasn't mentioned here is destroying of neighborhoods. If you've got a neighborhood where it's a neighborhood, I use the, uh, the trick or treat model myself. It's a good place to go trick or treating that has a neighborhood. If no kids ever go trick or treating, then it probably didn't matter. That's kind of the the kind of level we're talking about. So if it's a long, major road with this traffic. Not to bother anybody because nobody's going next to them anyway. But suddenly you turn around and your neighbors to the right and left are now only every two weeks at a time. You just ruin the neighborhood. So it's a, it's a different thing. But one is. Find it, say, it's always banned unless we say it can go in these places under these conditions. And I think we want to do those two things simultaneously rather than put the brakes on and now try to figure it out.
We go back to the first slide here. I just, we just, I want to ask the question here. Back on, so let's look at legal interpretation A. Historically, the town has not regular SDRs, has told anyone required that they're not regulated. The town has not told them they can do that. They told them something they're not regulated. Is that true?
Well, um, I I don't know of any particular instance, but I'm assuming that, uh, it's regulated as a, as a program. I'm assuming that somebody's got a CEO for dwelling.
My question is.
No.
That's the town has not advocated in any way that they can go into a business, right?
If if a dwelling unit is defined, if anything is leased and there's no temporal requirement, they, I mean, two laps, that second hole, they're right out. That's about a year, a month. That's okay. And that's allowed. That's dwelling. What you're trying, what you're saying is anybody gets it up for less than that, a different kind of use.
No, I didn't. I simply said, as the town advocated. The legal interpretation of A in any way other than they're saying they're not regulated. Right? Because it, there's a, there's a huge legal difference as far as I'm concerned. The difference is that. It's not regulated. It doesn't mean in my business model, if I was going into that, I wouldn't, I should, I should not have the ability to say at some, at some point, these are going to be regulated. Because someone could take legal interpretation B and say they shouldn't be in there. I'm just asking a question to your knowledge. Has anyone in town advocated under the legal A that you could do this?
What do you mean by advocate?
So, so, so someone comes in and said, okay, I'm going to open up an S T R. Can I do that in, in here? And you're, the, the town says they're not regulated or the town say, yes, you can do that.
I think we can only speak for ourselves who have answered that question. I know I have, I've always been very careful to say, don't regulate S T Rs.
Thank you.
I know that's what I was, but that's
That doesn't mean that they're not regulate, that they're not regulated in another way. And I would suggest that they're regulated. If they're in, they would have probably not been regulated, it would have been okay if they were in a commercial zone. But if you put a business in a residential area, just because it's not regulated as an S T R, doesn't mean that it's not regulated as a residence. Which is also what it is.
The temporal, the temporal question what's there is that you can have a rental house. In fact, we've got lots of rental houses, they're business, just the people lived there for years.
The timing becomes important to us here, right? Where has not before? Is it under 30 days? Is it under a week? Whatever. But the timing becomes very important, very similar. This is my benchmark question. Very similar to what Noah has said, right? That's, this is what Noah has interpreted, right? Your timings.
No, no, I can't. Short-term rentals are not
Under 30 days.
No. Well, they defined it.
The time is 30 days, right? But I believe it is. So if you have a long-term rental, we're not regulating it. If you're under 30 days, you cannot do it. It's prohibited.
Do we know how that's worked out? Yes.
People that I know are happy about it because the people who are doing it got letters that said you should cease it. Some have, some haven't. Problem, as you know, without an ordinance, the enforcement of that, similar to some of the issues we've gone through with the Spicer Mansion, are very lengthy, long and expensive to the town. And I think as we've talked with our attorney before, I think the favoring of the ordinance in conjunction with or separately is, is a great path to go if the, if the belief is, is that, you know, in some way is that you do have businesses in residential zones which are not permitted.
Are the zoning legal fees paid by the state or are they not? Who pays for that?
Loser pays.
It would be the fire district in the case of law.
If there's a, well, that's, that's a different thing. That was the state responsible.
Can I ask a question? For enforcing our zoning regulations?
If it goes to, if it goes, if it's a legal action.
No, of course, the statute authorized recovery. Don't always get them. Statute authorizes.
But we would be paying those fees.
Yeah, that's right. And then hopefully trying to recover them.
Here's my question. So, and I asked earlier, but it was, it wasn't within the session. So why did our town council not move forward with an ordinance? So to give a little bit of history on the working ordinance, I'll, I'll try to do my best, going back before COVID. At least one council member, at least the mayor, and that there may have been other members of the council formed a kind of little ad hoc group of short-term renter folks that lived within the town, the city, different regions. I think there might have been some knowing there are a number of different people who've done as a council initiative to try to, excuse me, start building some type of direction of where town should go. After that, who met for some period of time, I think the whole process might've been going on for a couple of years at the council level. Again, pre-COVID and then they directed staff to create an ordinance with some certain parameters that council told us, here's what we want, here's what we don't. They crafted something up. I think Rich and I probably worked on three or four drafts. And went to numerous council meetings, went a bit of feedback, really went back and forth on a, a lot of the performance standard type items within that ordinance. Advertised for public hearing, had an extensive amount of people. And again, that ordinance was written at the direction from the town council. They told us what they wanted in it. It was not a staff initiated, initiated project. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about that. That was even brought up at the last council meeting. That was something that staff was solely responsible for, something the council directed us to do. Wanted to be very clear about that. The council held a public hearing. It was an incredible amount of public input at that public hearing. Or again, changes. It was right before the last council election. And at that meeting, the mayor and the rest of the council said, I think there's still a lot of work to do on this. There's still a lot of public input needed. And we're going to table this basically punt all later time. The current council has not taken this issue up again. I think in early January-ish, the planning and zoning commission had sent a letter to the council requesting some type of workshop. Council was working on a number of other issues at that point in time. I think trying to get their feet onto them. I do think at this point in time, it would be a really great idea to send another similar request to the town. So, so essentially nothing happened. That ordinance right here is still a draft. I don't know if it'll ever go anywhere. I do think it would be beneficial for the planning and zoning commission to once again, send the letters to the council to suggest holding some of that from a joint workshop with the commission and the council to get some feedback on what their take is, is as we get further down this line in some of the slides that Jeff has, there's not a lot that we can regulate through zoning from the performance standard or short-term rentals, a real team or zoning, I mean, in a code ordinance, this type of ordinance.
I think we ought to make that first decision, what we want, I think.
And then the order that's so good, that could be very helpful.
In the last town council meeting, last week, there was a lot of public comment from short-term rental on that topic. Well, I think this is back on the town council's radar.
I think that we should lay out the ground rules first and then you can develop the ordinance.
Here's a question. Try to pass these zoning regulations first, or do we get to a point where we hand it off and say, this is what we'd like to pass, I'd like you to support?
We have this slide that actually said, here's the things we can do, here's the things we can't. Most of them are things we can't do and we need the ordinance to do. So I think that's part of it, say, hey, it's not like, here's our piece. Now go for it. I think these are, these have to happen together.
I would advocate for like, if, if you can get the councils, town councils' attention on this, the ideal situation would be for both bodies to be going through this process concurrently and the P C C thinking about what you want to do with zoning and the, the council concurrently thinking about what, what you want to regulate through the ordinances. Because there are just a lot of things legally you can't do through zoning that are, are big issues that we're hearing from the community that if you were to allow, explicitly allow short-term rentals, that people would want to be regulated. So one, I, I, we're, we're running out of time for, for this evening and again.
If, if I, if I owned a 10-bedroom house with eight bathrooms and it was a single family in a residential area and I rented it out on a Friday to a large family and then I rented it out to another family on Saturday and another family on Sunday. And then I provided a picnic area in the backyard and, you know, whatever. I mean, this is, you're running a wedding venue or a birthday place. This isn't a residential and how we are allowing businesses to establish themselves in a residential area and define themselves as residences when they could be doing something like I just described. I don't know. I don't get it. My interpretation is B, that these things were never allowed. Somehow they, they sneaked in, they started out as something innocuous that we didn't recognize, that we had no definition for. And they evolved into something that we have today and potentially what I just described, which is obviously a business.
And leveraging off of what you said, there's, I think we heard from some people that there are LLCs that are buying houses.
You know, I think that this, this label, this word, whatever it is, S T R, was put out there and now it's used as a shield to do anything you want. I don't know.
If you're in LLC and you buy a house for the, for the sole purpose of renting it out, you have a very, very heavy wallet. You can say, I'm making $10,000 a week. I can pay a million five for that house. It's not worth it.
That's the new mortgage.
And, and, and now the guy next door who's not getting that $10,000 a week is comps are suddenly, oh, you got a million five house next year. So I, I, there's a lot of downside in having unregulated S T Rs in town for existing residents.
I'm not opposed to seeing regulated S T Rs in town at all. My family uses them. We enjoy them. But to, to, I think this is, to me, it's, I'm really, I think that this is, makes our, our regulations a mo, it's a mockery of them because we have this residential area that we have essentially allowed businesses into that never should have been able to establish doing what they're doing. But I understand how it happened and, and I understand what the zoning official did, but I think it's something that's, that came about just by not, you know, we, it's the slow cook, the frog in the pot, you know, it just happened.
Well, we have only a few minutes left. I want, with your permission, I have a, I have one question that I want to ask before we adjourn. And of course, there, there's going to be a lot more conversation around this. So a few of you now have said, I'm okay with some short-term rentals, but they need to be defined, they need to be regulated and we need to be very clear about where they're allowed and where they're not. I want to get a sense from the room, is the general consensus, you know, details aside, do most people in the room feel that way, that you're, you're comfortable with some level of short-term rentals so long as they're regulated and in, in proper locations? Or are there people who feel that they are, they should be prohibited, period? I'd just like to get some sense of where the room stands on, on that point.
Does anyone have a problem with allowing them in certain instances?
I don't.
I have a, I would say owner occupied.
But you have to get into the details.
As opposed to what?
We want to say none anywhere, or would we allow them in certain instances?
With condition, with some condition. So that's my position, yes.
We'll have lots of conditions.
Lots of what pick zones where they're, would they allow them?
Lots of timing. Owner occupied or owner use or whatever.
Let's start with what we all believe in and then we can go back to the details and argue.
Yes, we're okay with that.
With having some.
No, I'm not. I don't know.
You don't know. I get that. Might not want in. Michael, but how do you feel?
I, I, I think that we should start out by saying none and then allow them. Maybe in, in, in places where that, where houses aren't really close together, you know?
That's a condition.
That's a condition. So that's, yes.
So you're in favor of?
I would, I would, wouldn't say I'm in favor of them with conditions. Yes.
Basically, you're in favor.
We're talking about having conditions.
Yeah, that's the big question. If anyone is feeling like I want to prohibit them across the board, then that makes our job really easy. We say, great, they're defined, they're prohibited, we're done. If you want us to take the next steps and say, we are, we're interested in exploring conditional allowances for, for these, and we don't know exactly what they are yet and obviously the devil's in the details, but we just want, we want the direction from you all that, yes, we want as a group to explore allowing these on a limited basis with conditions. And of course, it's your decision as a group with, with input from the community as to what those conditions would be.
Yes.
I think that's what we have.
We all have just one vote. We know that.
I think that much.
And I, although I like the legal interpretation B for sure, it's not that I wouldn't be listening to the rest of the commission and the experts and all and seeing what you're talking about. I just, I see a lot of problems and I also
I'll give you the B, but then it's like, but we will allow it.
And the other thing concerning me hasn't come up is it's really not fair what we're doing versus what's very big industry in town, the hotel industry.
This would support the hotel industry.
Well, even if we do say to, to you, Jeff, there are conditions, we don't ultimately have to have that, right? I mean, we could, we could just have very limited conditions where they would be allowed.
Yes, of course.
Yeah. And so that's sort of, I think from my perspective and just to, you know, because I have my own opinion and everyone has theirs, that allows people to then all, everyone contribute and more democratic, I think.
Absolutely. The next time we meet then, the focus would be on, all right. And again, I know we're not going to solve the legal interpretation, A, legal interpretation B tonight or anytime soon. So that's ongoing discussion.
Makes that decision. I'm sorry.
Well, that's going to be, it may, like, I don't know. I don't know. Like, I will, I will defer to your, your lawyer. I don't know exactly how that gets resolved as, as a planner. That's not my expertise. What I can say is as, as a planner and, you know, talking about what we can do with zoning as that's being figured out, if you're, I want to think about what is your end goal? As messy as it might be to get there, what is your end goal and how can we start talking as a group about where you are comfortable with short-term rentals and under what conditions? So that's the conversation I would like to have next, is trying to come to some consensus or at least, you know, some options for what zoning districts, what conditions that are under your purview and, you know, ultimately developing a list of requests for the, the town council to include in a short-term rental ordinance if there are things that are out of your control. So that, that's what I would like to do and I hope that we can take that journey together concurrently while this legal issue is being figured out. I mean, there's nothing that's keeping you from prohibiting them and then defining them and coming up with conditions. It's just a matter of how the town ultimately treats the existing short-term rentals in, in the community after that happens. And I, I don't have the answer for that. I don't know. I, I can't have the answer for that. That, that is where we, we turn to the lawyers in the room. But I hope that we as a group can focus on again, the ultimate goal of where we want to be.
Which is, you're saying is establishing areas or regulations that would make sense or conditions. That's what we want to do.
That's what we want.
The implementation will occur after that. I will figure out how to do it. Whether it's just by a pure ordinance or a combination of zoning regulations and which probably the best way. Oh, we're right on time. So when, when do we get back together?
That's a marvelous question.
We'll get a hold out there, everybody, and we'll have another meeting set up. We'll make sure exactly at the time that we'll get the word out.
For three or four weeks.
Yeah. And again, in a workshop form, you can have this discussion.
Right, because if we could do it maybe on a Tuesday, you know, on a July or August, like a Tuesday where we don't need
That you're not having two meetings in a row. I guess. Yes.
No, I, I, I mean, no, I mean, it's where people are used to having a meeting. All right, so.
Thanks, Jeff and Nate Kelly.
Thank you guys.
Thank you all so much.